Okay, how do I do that?
I just started.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, everybody! Apparently, we've started streaming. Stream now? It's coming!
So today, I'm gonna show you-
Oh, and I have to watch an ad.
...how to be professional and find what website for my new business idea.
You'll have to watch an ad for it on the stream.
When you train with me at Feral Fitness, you don't have to work out. You just have to look-
Ad is up! Ah, we're watching an ad, apparently. Waiting for the stream. Hi, guys! Can you see me yet? I don't know if you can see me yet.
If you did.
I have an ad. Skip ad. Skip ad. Are you guys there? For the stream. Hi, guys! Can you see me yet? I don't know if you can see me yet. Okay, hold on. What am I pausing? I'm pausing this. I have an ad.
We're on livestream.
Oh, I'm on my live stream. Sorry, guys! Hi! Okay, I'm sorry if the video quality is bad. We'll see how long this goes. We're gonna go for about a half hour. Awesome. You guys can see. This is wonderful. Thank you all for chatting. Awesome. Okay, so, in terms of questions, I looked through some of the questions that you guys put on the This Study Session Live video that we put up the other day. And I think what I'm gonna go over first with you guys is some of the questions that are in the reading section, because I think a lot of you had some of those. So I'm gonna start with those. I haven't quite figured out. I wanna do like a little bit of reading, hopefully a little bit of writing, and a little bit of math. We'll see how much we can crunch in here today. Good, I'm glad your quality is doing better, Andrew. So let's get started, and I'm just gonna roll through some of these questions that I have, and we'll just start talking about them. So the first thing that I think somebody asked for is they wanted to know some advice or tips about the SAT to students who are not native English speakers. And another question that I think several people were talking about was, "How do I approach the reading section, and what do I do when I have like really impossible history passages, and how do I finish this thing on time?" And the truth is, is that the answer to all of those questions is kind of the same. So that's the first thing that I'm going to address. And I am going to pull from a real SAT, excuse me, brain fry from teaching SAT and ACT all day. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pull from this Practice Test #5, which is the official SAT Practice Test #5. So if you guys have done this test before, then you've seen it before. If you were planning to take this test tonight to practice, spoiler alert, I'm going to talk about one of the passages here, specifically this one with passage 1 is Catherine Beecher's essay on slavery and abolitionism, and passage 2 is adapted from the Grimkey Letters to Catherine Beecher. So I'm gonna use this as sort of a template to address those three questions or so on the reading section, and we'll start with that, and we'll see how it goes, and then go from there. And feel free to say anything in the chat. I'll try to keep a little bit of an eye on it. And let's get started. So here, I hope you guys can see this test. And again, this is Test 5. Again, is the official Test 5. So if you have that giant book of eight tests and you wanna get it out with me, you know, have fun. And if you're looking for where this practice test is, let's say you wanna go home and take it, you can look it up, SAT Test 5 on the internet. Boom, and you can get it here, and I will put a link in right now. Ta-da! Great, Jessica, you just did this test. Hopefully, you will get something out of this. Okay, so here's what I'm gonna talk about. First, I just wanna review some general guidelines. And again, these are tips for, one, people who have trouble with history passages, and they look at them and they say, "Oh, my God, this is so hard." Two, people who might be ESL speakers or speak English as a second language. And so generally, what that means is sometimes when you approach an SAT passage, you will come across material that you look at it and you just say, "Oh, my God, I have no clue what the heck that means." And three, also, people who just have trouble understanding certain passages under the time constraints. So if you're in any of those three categories, which I feel like all of us have maybe been in that boat at some point, these are kind of some tips for those situations. So, let's get started, right here. So first tip that I have for you guys is focus on what you know, not on what you don't know. So if you come to a passage and you're worried about, "Oh, my God, that's freaking me out, and oh, my God, I don't understand that," you can get so psychologically thrown off that that can be a liability. The second thing that I wanna talk about is you wanna make sure that you really focus on main ideas, and don't worry too much about the rest. Don't worry about memorizing all the details as you read. Really focus on big ideas, main ideas, vibe. In general, this comes over to my general strategy tips, which are over here, which is, one, map the passage whenever possible. I don't know if you guys know what mapping the passage means, but in general, and you can probably Google it too after our time together, but mapping the passage is generally the idea that you, oop, and I'm realizing that this isn't all on here, so I will move it over for you guys.
Do I need to resize it?
No, I just moved it. We're fine. Sorry. We have staff on call helping. So we map the passage. What that means is as I read through this thing, I wanna figure out what is where. It's almost more important to know like what is in each paragraph, so that as I read questions and then have to figure out where that evidence would be, I know where to go, than it is to necessarily understand everything in the paragraph. And that's the great news. If you do speak English as a second language, or you do struggle with really hard history passages, you don't actually have to understand them 100%. You just have to know what is where. Which brings me to, if I go over here in my points, let's see. Number three, when you don't understand something, just know what it is. And I say two levels of comprehension. And my point there is that sometimes you read something and you're like, "Oh, my God, I have no idea what that means." And then maybe you reread it, and you reread it, and you reread it, which is my tip right here. Don't reread, 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 because that's just a vortex of pain. And sometimes, but sometimes that happens, where you feel like you don't know what to do, and so that's what you do. What do you do then? Where am I? Oh, yeah, what it is. So what I want you guys to focus on is what is where. And I'm gonna show you a little bit how you might do that down here in this like passage here. So here we are, we're down here with Catherine Beecher. And I could maybe look through this right here, this paragraph, and maybe this paragraph is a little bit tough for me to understand, and I'm just going to read a little bit of it right now. So we have, "Heaven has appointed to one sex the superior and the other sex the subordinate station, and this without any reference to the character or conduct of either." So that might have been confusing to some of you guys, but I can glean what I know, which is one sex is the superior, the other is subordinate, right? And heaven has appointed them. So I'm just gonna focus on what I know. So this is again my advice, focus on what you know, not on what you don't. And what I think this probably means is men are the superior and women are probably the subordinate, is my guess, 'cause she's writing from an old-fashioned point of view, not that I agree with her. "It is therefore as much for the dignity as it is for the interest of females in all respects to conform to the duties of this relation." So this is kind of confusing, but she is giving advice here, so I can see here she's saying something about advice to women. So again, I just focus on what I can kind of get. It might be confusing, but if I know what it's saying here in respects to conform to the duties of this relation, to conform to the duties, so that means to follow the duties, maybe I could get that little piece. If you can get that little piece, go with that little piece, okay? But while women hold a subordinate relation, oh, look, I was right. Woman is subordinate, and man is like in charge. So you can see how I can sort of piece through this, and this is about men are like the superior and women are the inferior, and then this says, "It is not because it was designed that her duties or influence should be any the less important." Okay, so now I might be kind of confused, because this is saying men are superior, women aren't inferior, but at the same time, it's also saying that she's not less important, but it was designed that the mode, so this is like where we're dicing out this like, men are better than women, maybe she's saying, but then she's saying we're still important, and I'm like, "That sounds kinda wishy-washy, but at least I know what's there." That's my point to you guys about at least know what is where. Okay, so now I'm gonna go back here. Somebody's asking what I'm doing. So what I'm doing right now, if you guys just joined, I'm going through some of this old-fashioned passage from Test 5 of the SAT Practice Test, and I'm talking about how to deal with passages that you don't understand, or how to deal with the reading section if you are not necessarily a native English speaker, or you read this stuff and you're like, "What the heck does that mean?" Okay. Okay. Now we're gonna go to my next point. So when you don't understand anything, know what it is. So what I like to say is there's two levels of comprehension, right? We have the first level of comprehension, which is, "I get everything." And sometimes, on an easy passage, you totally get everything, but sometimes on a history passage, you don't get everything, right? You read it, and then you're like, "What the heck did that mean?" Even this like Grimkey thing, I maybe don't get everything, but you can get kind of the little bits, like one sex is superior, the other subordinate, that means they're lower, and woman is the subordinate, and men must be more superior or something, but she's not less important. And so I'm kinda confused, 'cause it sounds like she's contradicting herself, but whatever. You get what I'm saying. I get the most I can. I at least know what it is, even if I don't completely understand the nuance that she's trying to speak with, and then I move on. My number four is that accept that you won't get everything, but knowing what is where is enough. So I find, especially on these history passages, or if you're ESL and you don't like really understand everything, the most important thing you can do is just know what kind of information is where. So like if I were in this next paragraph, we have, "Woman is to win everything by peace and love, by making herself so much respected, esteemed, and loved, that to yield her opinions." So this is, "Woman is to win everything by peace and love." So this is like, "All the fluffy, lovely women is to be peaceful and loving, and like, there, let every woman become so cultivated and refined in intellect that her taste and judgment will be respected." So this is sort of ushy-gushy, "Oh, here's how women are supposed to act," I would say, and I can just sort of mark it off here. Now, a tip for you guys who had trouble with timing, another thing that I can do, even if it's not a difficult passage, to try to speed up, is again, to just try to focus on big ideas and main ideas, just like I do when I don't totally understand a paragraph, and I just focus on the big ideas and the main ideas. I can do the same thing on an easier paragraph to just try to move through it more quickly, right? The other thing you can do, you can read like the first line of the paragraph, the last line of the paragraph. Oh, what was that?
12 minutes.
Okay. Okay, oops, this is covering things up, isn't it? Oh, no, that's on yours. Okay. So there you go. Cool. I'm gonna check out your comments and see. You guys are like, "Oh, my God, there's so many of you chatting. I can't even keep up." So anyhow, back up here. So my point is, just accept that you're not gonna understand everything, and if you don't, don't freak out. Just try to figure out where is everything, so that as you go through the questions, you at least know where to go back to, okay? The next tip that I have for you guys is if you are ever totally 100% lost, start with a question and hand-hold your way through the passage. So sometimes you start reading something and you're like, "Oh, my God, I don't understand this at all." And if that's the case, sometimes I will actually just go to the questions first and try to answer a question to try to figure out what the heck is going on. I don't necessarily advise for this in all circumstances. I really just recommend this when you are completely confused, and you feel like you're just wasting time when you're reading. Again, back to that point about not reading and rereading and rereading, one of the worst things that you can do on the SAT is just read a bunch of material and have it all whoosh over your head, and then do the same thing again, and have it all whoosh over your head again, and then do it again, and then it whooshes over your head. That's like the worst thing that you can do, because you're basically just wasting time. So if you feel yourself wanting to get into that pattern, stop yourself, halt, and just go and try to look at a question, see if that helps you. Now, I have two strategies on the questions-first kind of thing, and I never advise anyone to try questions first until you've already tried to get into the passage, tried to map out the passage, even if you don't read every word, try to at least figure out kind of what's where. I don't recommend this until you've at least tried that, and then if that's completely confusing, or you know you're wasting time, you can go to the questions first. If you do that, there's two strategies. Strategy one is you could go to a main idea question first, and if you can figure out the main idea, that might start to unlock the passage for you, and then you can finally get what the heck is going on. Strategy two is to go to specific questions first, because they are the easiest to answer without understanding central claims. However, that second one is not necessarily ideal. If you are in that second category, you could approach things like vocab and context. Those are usually the easiest to do with almost no context, or just like a paragraph of context. Or you could do things that have specific paragraphs or places that are at play. So if I were going to do specifics first, I might do 14 and 15, but again, that's not gonna give me a very good read on the passage as a whole, but if I'm running out of time, at least I might be able to get those right. So now I'm gonna just try to approach question #11. How are you guys doing? I'm just checking in on you. You have like so many. You guys are chatting. Oh, my God, there's like so much chat. This is just like holla back. Okay. Anyhow, I'm just gonna keep going, guys. I hope this is valuable for you. So I'm gonna read #11, and #11 says, "In passage 1, Beecher makes which point about the status of women relative to that of men?" So I remember where that is. Remember how I was like going through this and reading this? Men versus women? I remember this, one sex the superior and the other the subordinate, and it says, "Women hold a subordinate relation," right? So I remember that that was talked about here, and then there was something about they're not any less important, and that was super confusing to me, but at least I know where the point is. So then, when I look at like #12, right, and I know I'm looking for the best evidence, I might lean toward A and B. So another technique that I sometimes use with these evidence questions, and I know some of you might have watched my reading tips video a while back, and FYI, that was created before the College Board had released any more than four tests. So now that there are more tests out there, I can analyze this test better and kind of understand it better. So the way that I approach these questions is actually different now than when I made that video. So when I made that video, I would always do them in order, and I still ascribe to the idea that if you can do them in order and they're easy enough, you should do them in order. But sometimes, oops, sorry, but sometimes doing them in order, it's like, "I have no frickin' clue," right? I think she said something about women are like lower than men, but they're still important. So I'm just gonna go through these first, and we'll see if I can get this as an easy question. When I approach these as quote-unquote "easy" questions, the idea is, one, I know where the answer is. Two, if I didn't understand what it meant the first time, right, when I'm talking to you guys and saying you don't have to understand everything the first time you read it, at least what you'll know is on a question like this, you know where to go, and so you can go back there, and then you can reread, okay? That's the time to reread. Don't reread on your first pass. Just get through the passage in two minutes or three minutes. Okay. So I'm going back up here, and again, I have, "One sex is superior, the women are subordinate." While women are subordinate, they're not less important, okay? So there's my mantra. "Women depend on men for their safety and security, but men are largely independent of women." I don't know, that's definitely not where I just looked. "Women are inferior to men, yes, but women play a role as significant as that played of men, yes." This is the completely contradictory statement that I just read. "Women have fewer rights than men do, but women also have fewer responsibilities." And then, "Women are superior to men, no." This is totally not right, because I know that it said that they were inferior. So I'm pretty sure I'm at B, and I'm pretty sure I know that my evidence is right up there at the beginning, okay? So I'm gonna look at 6 to 10 and 13 to 14. Now, if I read through these and I still have no frickin' clue, you know what I do? I go to #12, and then I start bracketing all of these off for myself. And rather than necessarily reading 6 through 10, and then looking up 13 through 14 and reading that, and looking up these lines and reading that, rather than doing that, what I'll often do is I bracket everything off first, because it's like busy work, right? It's kind of interrupting your train of thought, so I bracket this off, right? And it interrupts your train of thought if you are like bracketing and then reading. You're interrupting all of your flow, your mental flow, with busy work. So I don't like to do that. I need to do all the busy work first, at least on really hard problems. And then we have 13 to 14, so let's look at 13 to 14.
We're at 18 minutes.
Okay, wow. This is taking forever. 11, 12, 13. "A man may not act on society by the collision of intellect in the public debate." So this is totally new paragraph. So here we have, "But while women hold a subordinate relation in society, it is not because it was designed that her duties or influence should be any less than important." So this is totally where it is. She has a subordinate relation to the other sex, that's men. Do you see how that's compared to men? Boom, so I totally found it. So as you can see, if I do a good job of mapping the passage, if I know what is where, even if I don't completely understand it, I can reference that when I come here to find this answer choice, and I know that B is right, and I know that A is right, and actually, on these evidence questions, sometimes I won't even read all four of these, and that is a way I save time. So some of you are asking, "How do you save time?" Though in an ideal world, I would read all of these answer choices. If I don't have time, I will not read all of them, and I will see if this is easy, and if that is easy, then I will do this next, and if that is easy, I quit, and I put a couple of double-check marks, and if I happen to have time at the end, I go back, but that's kind of how I deal with it. Let's see how you guys are doing. So that's a little bit of a tip for the reading section. I feel like I have so many things I could talk about. I could like do this for like two hours, but I won't. Oh, my goodness. You guys have so many questions.
Need some math.
Okay, yeah, so we should do some math, and we should do some writing. I just wanna go through my last tips, just 'cause I have a few last tips. Remember, you can do questions out of order, we talked about that, and remember also, you can do passages out of order. So those of you who are having trouble with timing, or who are ESL and might have total trouble with history, you can just do the history last. If you are doing passages out of order, I generally recommend that you don't bubble as you go, but you do an entire passage and then bubble after the passage is done. Once you get to about five minutes left, and you have to be good at keeping track of your time, or once you get to the very last passage that you're going to do, you need to start bubbling as you go. But by that time, most of your bubbles should be filled in, so you probably are in better shape. The next thing that I'm gonna say, and this is just some last tips, if you don't understand something, focus on keywords in the question stem above all, because keywords in your answer choices tend to have like cherry picks, if you guys watched my SAT reading video, and if you didn't, go watch that, and I will tell you about that. But my best advice is if you really are relying on keywords and you have no idea what anything means, at least you can pick out where the keywords are being discussed, and that can save you. So on this one question where I was looking over here, it says, "The status of women relative to that of men." These are what I would call my keywords. So if you are ESL, if you are having trouble understanding passages, if that's your deal, focus on this question stem keywords if you don't get anything else. And if you can just match up where this information is, where we're comparing men to women, you might be able to get this answer right, because you know that section is comparing men to women. And you know that's talking about something that sounds kind of like the words here. That can save you. But again, be careful about cherry picking through these answer choices, but the question stem, you can usually hang on to those keywords, and those are usually a good anchor. Okay. Enough of reading for now. And now, let's see what you all are talking about. Somebody asked my SAT score. I've scored perfectly on the 2,400 version of the SAT. So there you go, if you wanna know. And I've scored, well, whatever, we can talk about other things. Somebody is asking, "How do I do all that in 25 minutes?" I think I tried to at least talk to some of that. So writing, I wanna talk about writing. Let's see, what do you guys want help with in writing? This is my question for you. I'm thinking about, yes, we were going to save this video on YouTube? No, I am not doing this tomorrow, Omar. A logical sentence question. I'm gonna talk about maybe two things about the writing section, okay? I'm gonna talk about what I think keeps people from, who are getting like a 750 from getting an 800. And hard grammar, yes, swaggy McMuffin, that's what I'm talking about right now. Colon's, I will also help with colons. Let's do a little bit of colons. Colon's, 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 you guys! This is great. Delete or not delete? So I'm gonna add the add or delete, those kind of questions. I'm just gonna give you guys a general tip on those. Anything that's like keep or delete, or rhetorical strategy, and I think you guys know what I'm talking about, it's those kind of questions that essentially you have to kind of know what's going on. My best advice is, and I actually have changed my advice, because again, as things go over time, I realize that, "Oh, my God, this isn't like, this isn't necessarily the best way to do things," and we adapt over time. So what I found, that one of the keys to getting the really hard stuff right on the grammar is really zooming out and understanding the structural layout of the section. So I'm gonna show you guys a little bit right now what that's like. Okay, so here's the deal. I don't necessarily read the whole passage all up front, but what I will say is I've started reading it as I go, and trying to read at least about 80% of the passage as I go. Now, the parts of the passage, sorry, someone's printing out there. I'm closing the door. So I wanna try to focus on getting at least 80% of the passage as I go, and I try to basically kill two birds with one stone, so that I don't totally lose time on this. So when I have something like this, like a keep or delete, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to read up to this point, and should we make the addition here? The other thing that I might wanna do is read a sentence or two later, at least read the whole first paragraph, because I really wanna zoom out and have my whole structural understanding of stuff. What I found with myself, when I first started taking practice tests on this particular version of the exam, I was getting like 1590s and missing one on the writing section, and what finally helped me break through that pattern and helped me get that extra 10 points was actually having a better handle on the main idea of all of the paragraphs and of the passage as a whole, and really trying to focus on like my topic sentences and my conclusion sentences of every paragraph. Basically, there's huge structural choices going on in all of this writing, and you need to be clued into that. So that's my first tip for like the hard grammar stuff. If you really wanna amp your score, if you're like getting a 750, and part of it is due to wrong writing questions.
25.
Okay. And if, blah, 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 I totally just lost. Where should sentences go? That's kind of my big tip, is really try to focus on those, the structural piece, the main idea, and again, if you can kill two birds with one stone, and as you read a sentence like this that just has one word that you're swapping out, if you can kind of remember what the content of it is at the same time, that's how you can kind of nail this test and not lose time and still get through it all. I don't necessarily recommend reading the whole passage before you start the thing. I recommend reading as you go, and trying to keep tabs on about 80% of it, and just know that that's part of your goal, is to remember that while you're doing all this other stuff. Okay. Colon's. Let's quickly talk about colons. EOI. This is going to be on YouTube even after the live ends, yes, so if you wanna go back and review anything that I talked about, you guys can just go watch this video where we're going to have it available for you. Punctuation misuse, semicolons, oh, my God. Hard bubble, math stuff. Okay, so I realistically don't know if we're gonna get to a ton of math stuff today, but I do know that we have several math videos, so if you guys haven't watched them yet, you should definitely go check them out. If you just go to SuperTweeter TV on YouTube and you click on our SAT video playlist, which is right under our sort of banner at the top, it's like fifth or sixth down, you can see some of our math videos there. So yes, I am going to go over punctuation. So here's what I'm gonna pull up, actually. The good news is punctuation is punctuation. So I have this nice PowerPoint all ready to go. Let's see. Moving it over here, so you guys can read it. Can you move the chat over a little bit? Perfect, I just wanna make sure you guys can see it. Okay. Okay, cool. So dashes, yes. We are going to talk about dashes. Okay. Dashes, semicolons and colons. Now, I wrote this for the ACT, this is actually part of our best ACT prep course ever. But the cool news is that punctuation rules are punctuation rules, and whatever's true on the ACT, for the most part, is true on the SAT. And then that is particularly true for these kinds of punctuation marks. So what I'm going to try to go over really quickly here, and we're almost out of time, but I'm going to go a few minutes over, so if you want to hang out, hang out. I'm going to go over dashes, I'm going to go over semicolons and colons. And we're going to do this in lightning speed, so we'll see how this goes. So first of all, dashes can be used in three cases. So I'm going to go through those three cases. The first is to offset non-essential phrases or clauses. I.e., you have this interrupting phrase in the middle, okay? We're going to look at an example. The neighborhood swimming pool where all this trouble had begun sat eerily empty. So you see how this is like an interrupter of sorts, and it could totally be removed? Cool, we can separate that with dashes. Now, I can also do it like, she ate the tart strawberry laden and covered with whipped cream, as if she had not eaten in days. So this is just description material between these two things. And this is the same essentially as a pair of commas. So if you guys know how to use a pair of commas, you can almost always use a pair of dashes in place of the pair of commas, as long as there's no confusion created, because there aren't other random commas in the sentence that make something confusing or unclear, okay? So here, dashes are equivalent to parentheses or a pair of commas, got it? Cool. They're a little bit more jazzy, they're a little bit more dramatic, they're a little bit more fun. But that's the case. Generally, the test will not require you to choose between any of these three mostly equivalent choices, though I have seen it maybe on one exam. But I think it was pretty clear that they wanted a little like jaziness, or the dash was more appropriate. There you go. Okay, next rule, you cannot mix a comma, semicolon, or parentheses with a dash to the same effect. So if you want removable jazz in the middle, you cannot blend the dash with a comma, that is a total no-no. You have to have the same punctuation mark with the same punctuation mark, and you don't want to add like an extra, you don't want to double up. So this is right, right? I can have a dash here and a dash here. And sometimes, two dashes would have been correct, but that's not available. So then you need two commas. The other thing that I'll say about this double dash situation, sometimes there's a planted dash, and you need to figure out that that piece of removable information needs a second dash. And so you need to read the whole sentence to make sure you see that context, okay? So that's the first way we use dashes. Second way we use dashes, to set off a list, restatement, or additional detail added in by the writer after a complete thought or clause. In this way, it is equivalent to a colon. But here's what I like to say. Dashes can always sub in for a colon, so if you wanted to use a colon, you can always use a dash. But you can also use dashes when a colon is inappropriate, and there's a specific time when that's true. And that's when we have contrast between these two ideas. Generally, a colon can only be used when these two ideas are kind of similar. But a dash can be used when there's contrast. So here, you can see, the movement was popular, millions attended the sit-in protest in Central Park. We could use a colon, we could use a dash. This is describing how the movement was popular, so it works as a colon. And here, it also works as a dash. So here's an example of how dashes are more flexible. I love the new sofa dash, the chair was a different story. And I actually should delete that space there, but you'll forgive me, right? The chair was a different story here, this is like a contrast statement with this. This doesn't describe why I love the sofa, or it doesn't explain further the love of the sofa. So that's why we use a dash. And the third way that we use dashes is to separate two independent clauses, i.e., instead of a semicolon. So if you guys have, oops, we'll just zoom in a little bit. A sentence that you could have a semicolon, you can always use a dash. So again, I'm going to just do a quick, easy recap of dashes. We can use dashes instead of commas and parentheses in pairs. We can use dashes instead of colons, but remember, they're a little bit more flexible than a colon. And then we can use dashes instead of semicolons, right? And remember, semicolons separate two complete clauses. Hopefully you guys know that. When to avoid dashes? Generally, if you're choosing between a comma and a dash, and a comma is the traditional means of punctuation, go with the comma, okay? So here is an example. I relished the opportunity because I knew it was the chance of a lifetime. The comma is better here, because when we have independent clause, dependent clause, the standard way to do it is a comma. So if you have something like that, go with the comma. You also want to go with the comma when you have what I call like an introductory phrase. So here we have a participial phrase, starting with an ing, right? A present participle starts this. So when I have this phrase, walking on the boardwalk, comma, I peered. When you have those introductory phrases, commas are usually more appropriate than a dash. Because remember, a dash should come after a complete statement unless it's an interrupter. That's your general rule of thumb, okay? So there are some sentences, you can freeze frame that if you want. The colon and a dash overlap, you usually don't have to choose between them, so just look for context clues. The other thing about colons is you can't use a colon and then a second colon in a sentence that's sometimes really awkward. So sometimes then, like a dash is necessary, so look at your context.
We're at 32.
Yeah, we're at 32 minutes. Okay, I'm going to really quickly talk about colons, because it seems like you guys are all still here. And you are. If you want advice in the essay, I have like two videos on the essay. So go, again, if you guys want more. I know I don't have time to do everything right now. But if you want more, you can go to our YouTube channel. And if you go on our YouTube channel, here, I'm just showing you, and you go to videos, or you know what, go to home, this is actually easier, I'll show you the easier way to do this. Go to home, and then go to SAT prep, right here. This playlist has gobs of fun practice for you guys. So if you're looking for math videos and you haven't watched them all, go check out this playlist. If you haven't, I will put it here for you guys. SAT playlist. Yep, so there's that. And then, I'm just going to quickly go over colons.